Good evening. Welcome to the City Council meeting for September 23rd. Madam Clerk, will you please call roll?
Councilmember Dillard?
Here.
Councilmember Lothian?
Here.
Councilmember Suzuki?
Here.
Vice Mayor Casares?
Here.
Mayor Reps Jappas?
Meeting with an invocation and flag salute, and tonight, the invocation and flag salute will be given by Councilmember Suzuki. Councilmember Suzuki.
I'm so loud, I didn't need that. In the Marvel Universe, Captain America once reminded his team, "I'm just a kid from Brooklyn." His words remind us that leadership and service don't come from titles alone, but from the willingness of everyday people to step up for the greater good. As we meet tonight, may we carry that spirit, grounded in humility, focused on community, and committed to peace. Let our discussions and decisions be guided by respect for one another and by the hope that together we can continue building a stronger La Mesa. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Next on the agenda are City Manager comments.
I have none.
Community Bulletin reports, September is National Preparedness Month. This month, we are encouraging residents to prepare for emergencies and disasters by raising awareness and empowering communities. Take proactive steps in, we've created videos with tips that you can put into action. You can visit our YouTube channel and check them out by going to our website and be directed. La Mesa Park and Recreation Foundation is celebrating 25 years of giving back to La Mesa Parks. Join their 25th Anniversary Disco Party on Saturday, September 27th, 1977, from 6:00 to 10:00 p.m. I didn't know if anyone would pick that up, I'm just kidding. It's 2025, I'm just joking. This Saturday at, from 6:00 to 10:00. All proceeds from the event will help a new playground in shade at Aztec Park. Visit lamesaparks.org. Learn about the benefits of tree and how to care for them during a tree planting demo this Saturday, September 27th, 10:00 a.m. at Harry Griffin Park. Wednesday, October 1st, California Clear Day. Join thousands of commuters in San Diego in region by biking, walking, or taking public transportation, carpooling, and more to your destination. Plus, MTS will be offering free rides on the trolley and buses that day. The city and MTS will also be handing out free giveaway items at the La Mesa Boulevard Trolley Station at 3:00 p.m. Mark your calendars for the 52nd Annual La Mesa Oktoberfest happening next weekend. Savor German food, drinks, and dance, and nonstop music on two lively stages. Festivities kick off Friday, October 3rd. For more information, visit lamesaoktoberfest.org. Save the date for Life 101 Expo, happening on Thursday, October 16th. We'll be hosting this event inside the Police Department Community Room. Participants will learn life skills like personal budgeting, renting, job tips, roommate hacks, and more. We share, we'll share more details in the upcoming weeks. That is October 16th, Thursday, October 16th. Please put that on your calendar. I will now hand this over to Vice Mayor Casares.
Thank you. I have no reports, but I do want to wish a very happy and peaceful high holidays to the Jewish community as they enter this season.
Thank you. Councilmember Suzuki? Councilmember Lothian?
Yes, I have a few. Hacienda Casadoris is opening this Thursday. A lot of people have been very excited about it. I'm going to be in Nashville, so I'm going to miss it unfortunately. The owner asked me to express his gratitude and appreciation for the city of La Mesa moving two big garbage cans that were bolted to the sidewalk right in front of the restaurant, next to the outdoor dining patio. He's over the moon, said thank you. And you guys also removed the garbage cans from the dining patio at Johnny B's, which was great. I'm also happy to announce that our city manager made some really cool moves last week to improve maintenance and beauty of La Mesa's rightways, gateway entrances, and medians. And I love the stated goal. We want the public to notice and our residents to take pride entering into and driving around La Mesa. So that's great news for the jewel of the hills. And also too, our website's been revamped, it looks fantastic. But something that I just found, I think actually Amanda helped me find it, is transparency has just went like this. If you go to our homepage, there's a little robot, and if you press on it, there's a box that comes up that says Active Developments. You press that box and you know every commercial project that's happening in La Mesa at all stages, which includes discretionary review, entitled construction plan review, and under construction. So everybody wants to know what's going on in their community, so it's fantastic. And the graphics are beautiful. The information's detailed, there's a map, it's amazing. And then lastly, I want to thank the city of La Mesa for adhering to the United States' flag policy and flying our City Hall's flag at half-mast last week in honor of Charlie Kirk, who was murdered in broad daylight in front of thousands of people, including his wife and kids, on September 10th at the Utah Valley University Campus.
Councilmember Dillard? Thank you. Additions or deletions by the, yes?
None from staff.
Okay. I have a proclamation to read. Whereas, "City of La Mesa is committed to ensuring the safety of all those living in our city. Fire remains a serious public safety concern both locally and nationally, and in the presence of lithium-ion batteries in many household devices introduce unique fire risks. Most of the electronics used in our house daily, including smartphones, tablets, laptops, power tools, e-bikes, e-scooters, and toys, are powered by lithium-ion batteries, which if misused damage or improperly charged can overheat and set fires, or even explode. The National Fire Protection Association reports an increase in battery-related fires underscoring the need for public education on the use of lithium-ion batteries. Residents should follow three key calls of action related to safe use of lithium-ion batteries. Buy only listed products, charge batteries safely, and recycle them responsibly to present battery-related fires." The 2025 Fire Prevention Week theme, "Charge into fire safety, lithium-ion batteries in your home," serves to remind us the importance of using, charging, and recycling lithium-ion batteries safely to reduce the risk of fires in homes and communities. Now therefore, I, Mark Rapistathis, the 23rd Mayor of the City of La Mesa and the entire City Council, do hereby proclaim the week of October 5th to the 11th, 2025, is National Fire Prevention Week in the City of La Mesa, and that we urge all residents in the City of La Mesa to charge into fire safety with lithium-ion batteries and do the three things: buy only listed products, charge batteries safely, and recycle them responsibly. Thank you. Next on the agenda, item number 52 is a presentation of the new building space needing analysis for City Hall and post office relocation to allow for the expansion of the library. I'll hand this over to Mr. Humora.
Thank you, Mayor. I've just got a few brief background comments before I bring up our consultant to do a presentation. A Library Needs Assessment Study was presented to the City Council on July 25th, 2023. Three options were developed. Option one was a vertical expansion of the library. Option two was a horizontal expansion, and option three was a new library building. The City Council directed staff to proceed with option two, horizontal expansion into the existing post office space. The City Council Civic Center Subcommittee recommended that the city consider constructing a new building as part of the next phase of the Civic Center redevelopment where the post office in City Hall could be relocated to. In order to prepare for a new City Hall, an architect is needed to prepare a space needs analysis for a new building. The analysis will determine what size the building should be that includes space for a new City Hall and post office. Staff contacted post office real estate personnel to let them know of the city's plans to conduct the space needs analysis and invited them to participate in the process. A letter was also sent to the Post Office Vice President of Facilities on July 30th, 2025, requesting the post office commitment to relocate to a new, smaller facility. Copies of the letter were sent to Representative Sarah Jacobs, Representative James Comer, who's the Chairman of the Committee on Oversight on Governmental Reform of the U.S. House of Representatives, Supervisor Monica Montgomery-Steph, Miguel Acosta, the Director of the San Diego County Library, Anita Temapua, who's the Postmaster in Spring Valley, and Jacqueline Hammond, Property Manager for the Postal Service. We have not heard anything back yet from the post office. On March 25th, 2025, the City Council awarded a contract for a space needs analysis for City Hall to HMC Architects. Kyle Peterson, Principal with HMC Architects, is here to make a presentation, and then he and I will be available for comments and questions. I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Peterson now.
Thank you, Greg. Thank you, Councilmembers. I'm excited to present this to you all today. It's a culmination of a lot of work and a lot of dedication and thought. So first off, the team that worked on this was comprised of a city staff executive team. It was a collaborative process that took place over the course of about a week's time of close interaction. That design workshop was really instrumental to developing great understanding about the existing facility and the needs of the city executive leadership team. What we did to kick off that design workshop was host a visioning session with city staff to understand their needs and hopes and dreams for this new facility. And what you see on screen here is the guiding principles that were resultant of that visioning session. First and foremost, accessibility, look and feel, dynamic spaces, and future vision. Ultimately, this City Hall is seen to be a space that provides a fantastic view of city government and meets all the administrative needs of both city staff and public. So as you can see, the existing City Hall is cramped and aged. It's in need of replacement, it's about that time. Some of the word storm that you see on the left, those were the thoughts about what this new facility could be and how it could impact both the city staff and the community. So the process really consisted of cataloging all the existing City Hall spaces, engaging in surveys, and existing staff counts with department heads. We then took that information and used our professional experience to right-size all the existing spaces to modern government office standards for function and position. We increased the quantity of conference room and collaborative spaces and storage to align with those same modern government office standards. We also increased restroom stall count to align with California Plumbing Code requirements. And then we considered office space for future staff growth of 10% over time. And so what that yielded was a future City Hall square footage of 26,000 square feet approximately, which when you compare that to the existing current City Hall, it's about a 6,000 square foot delta, 5,000 square foot delta, about a 25% increase in size over today's building. You can see here the list of various spaces that are required as part of the City Hall by department on screen. What is also included on this space program is the post office that's relocated from the library building. That's about 5,000 square feet, yielding a total building size of 30,950 square feet. We then engaged in an exercise with the department heads to identify the location of their various offices and other spaces within their department and their relationship to other departments within the City Hall. You know, we're looking for collaborative nature and trying to figure out how best to optimize interdepartmental adjacencies. This plan that shows those interdepartmental adjacencies takes all of that into account and is a good diagram for future City Hall. The previous slide was the first floor. This is the second floor. One thing I do want to note is there's a clear delineation between public, front-of-house spaces, including the council chambers and other spaces versus the private staff spaces. So maintaining those clear divisions creates safety for staff, and it's a good thing. We then took the space diagram that we were coming up with and looked at the potential site configurations that were available. And we, as you can see, we came up with a handful of those. You see six on the screen. We probably came up with twice as many to look at different site configurations and their impact on both the Civic Center site and the broader community. And all of these yielded suboptimal results, ultimately culminating in the diagram that you see here on screen, which was the preferred layout both by city staff and yours truly. What this identifies is the City Hall located just to the east of the police station, off of University Avenue. What that provides is great visibility from the street and gives you that civic presence. And, you know, it's a great location for that. Creates a civic plaza to the south. We are looking at the adjacency of the police station and the library, and there's a great correlation between those entries, really creating that focused civic plaza. And then located to the south of that, there's the potential for residence, residential development that could be, you know, utilized as part of this development. We then put together a timeline for this project over a period of time that includes internal processes, RFP negotiations, a period of design and construction for each of these potential projects, ultimately yielding the City Hall occupancy mid-2029. That's the target for that. It's a good estimate that includes contingency for float and other sorts of things. Lastly, costs. So looking at that 30,000 square foot City Hall yields a cost of approximately $35 million in project cost when you account for construction, soft costs, professional fees, and project contingency. Do you have any questions?
Yes, thank you. I'll start. I don't know if I'll ask either. I'll just throw it out to both of you. So you and I, we talked about this, about the potential, obviously, of the new City Hall. Create more space to expand the current library and create space for the post office if they so desire to stay there. And what I had brought up to you is something that's been talked about probably for the past decade, that to be able to have the potential to create more parking than a space for every person if there's potential residents. But to expand parking beyond what we think we need now, to expand it exponentially to accommodate all possible contingencies in the village as well. And we have housing to our south and to our north, and now we're going to have it to our east. To, we have this opportunity with this space. What's going to be the plan? How do we use, maximize the land to create as much parking as we possibly need?
One of the things we spent quite a bit of time on was multiple parking scenarios. We can build one new building, City Hall and the post office, and not build any structured parking. But if we want to maximize the space, if we want to do commercial, if we want to do residential, and we want to maximize that, we're going to need more structured parking. The structured parking would be for the public, visiting City Hall and the post office, for residents, and also potentially parking for the trolley and/or the bus that's here as well. So we've looked at lots of levels of parking, and it's scalable, so we can do, we can do, go down. We could go down two levels, and we can go out as well.
So we're considering going down and up? Okay. I'll go to Councilmember Dillard.
Thank you. First, Mr. Peterson, thank you for this presentation. I love visuals. I do much better with visuals, and I can appreciate this potential design. I especially am excited about our library. This has been talked about for years now, and I'm hoping that some of the people that represent, you know, pushing the library, either being expanded or moved, or found another location. I hope that they're happy with this new size, because I think that it was a good choice for council members to choose this. And I also want to know if you do do all of this, and it is in place by 2029, hopefully, are you going to just, would that mean phases? And if so, where would you start with all of that?
It's definitely going to be phased, construction-wise. The thought is that potentially we engage a developer to help us build this out. And then let the smart people that do construction and construction phasing figure that out. The great thing is we have 2.5 acres of vacant land right now. So there's a lot of flexibility in the phasing, whereas past Civic Center moves did not have that kind of flexibility. We had to take buildings down, we had put up temporary fire stations. There was a lot of moving around that we've done to get to this point. We have a lot of flexibility moving forward.
And the last thing I wanted to say was, and thank you for that information, is about the parking. The mayor brought it up. It is a serious concern that we do have. And I would like to see maybe options for both, both for the residents, that if we do have an apartment complex, that there's parking for them, and also parking for others that would like to, you know, walk around, either go to the trolley station, or to the village, or wherever else it is that they would like to, you know, leave their car. And I believe right now, in this current location, we have several charging stations, and we want to, you know, keep that as well, or expand that. But yeah, it is an issue, and I think that whatever we do, we need to keep that in mind and put parking wherever we can. Thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
Did you have any advice, Mayor Casares, then Councilmember Lothian? When you want to talk to anyone, just sorry to interrupt you, because I don't always look over. Could you buzz in, just have your green light on, then I'll know. Thank you.
Thank you to city leadership, and also to yourself and your colleagues who worked on this. I also really liked the visualization, and I'm really excited about this. I'm also really excited about the opportunity to bring more residential onto this site. I think a lot of times with housing, the conversation is like, we'll put your money where your mouth is. And we did that right next door with the old police station. Now we have residential, and I think bringing that here is really important. And I'm glad that that was conveyed and also brought into this design. Since we're talking about parking, I'm curious if there's, I know this is way further down the line, especially because the residential, like, we're going to be here while that's getting built, so residential won't even start until the new City Hall is ready. But have we considered it being paid parking so that we ensure that there's turnover, and it's not like being used as airport parking, if you will?
Certainly, that will be considered.
Okay, wonderful. And then, do I understand properly that this will also be done under a project labor agreement?
Yes, under the current project labor agreement. Anything over $1 million.
Excellent.
So this will be way over $1 million.
Yeah, I'm really excited about that. As we know, speaking of the airport, Terminal 1 just opened today, and it was done under a project labor agreement. It came in under budget, and it looks great, so I'm excited that we'll have this big project under PLA. Thank you.
Councilmember Lothian?
Thank you. So the amount that you just quoted was about $35 million. How much more, if you did a parking structure, just ballpark, that would add to that $35 million?
At least double.
It'd be $70 million?
At least.
For parking structure? It would be, okay, $70 million. So a parking structure, which is just concrete and lines, is more than libraries and post offices and offices and air conditioning and everything?
Very expensive.
Jesus, okay. Sorry. The second thing is, I know La Mesa is fiscally sound, and I'm very proud of that, but I remember years ago that we were worried about unfunded pension obligations and liabilities. I haven't heard anyone talk about it for years, but is that something, is that a black cloud looming on the future where we really can't be talking about projects like this?
The cloud's still there, but it's much smaller, and it's under much better control than it has been in the past. But certainly, we need to look at our finances as we, if we undertake a project of this magnitude.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, I'm going to go. Speakers, John Schmidt, followed by Michelle Huey.
Hope you'll forgive the mask, but my wife and I are proof that COVID is not gone. So we're over it, but just in case, we're being kind. My name's John Schmitz, and as you know, I've been involved with the Friends of the La Mesa Library since 2008. And somebody asked what we think about this, and we have not had a full board meeting to evaluate this. But generally speaking, and there is another board member here, and there's some other library supporters here, I think we're all very, very pleased to see that we're this close to finally making some progress on getting not only a better city hall for the city employees, for all the hard work that they have to do, but to get a library that's suitable for a city the size of La Mesa. I have some personal comments. As some of you may know, I worked for the city for nine years. I actually sat in the trailer right there for about eight of those years. I'll be really glad when that trailer is gone because it was old then, and if you look carefully, you can see rot around the edge of the building. One problem I see with the site plan layout, all of them continue to keep the driveway off of University Avenue right where it is now. If there's, in the process of this development, if that driveway could be shifted a little to the east or somewhere else, as somebody that comes from the north side of the city comes down Baltimore and then has to turn in here, as the two council people from the north side nod their head, it's an adventure sometimes. And then when you get in, you've got the ramp coming up from the police building. It hasn't happened very often, but one time I came around and a police car was trying to get out. You know, that's, it's a throat right there that if, in the process of this development, if you can fix that, that would be great. Lastly, I really liked the quad concept in your options. That provide, as you know, we do the third grader field trips every year, and it's so popular, and we have enough funding coming in. We would like to continue that for the foreseeable future.
30 seconds.
Having that area available for, you know, either starting or ending activities as part of that, something like that, would be really nice. I'm a step boy. Can I see a show of hands of those of you who are here for the library? Thank you.
Thank you, Michelle Huey, followed by David Harris. Welcome.
Good evening, mayor, council, and city staff. My name is Michelle Huey. I am a local business owner in the village. I really like the plan for the new city hall, especially the promenade version. It looks very nice with new buildings, public spaces, event spaces, and a parking garage. However, I do have a concern, which is parking. Recently, parking has been a hot topic amongst businesses, residents, and customers, mainly that there isn't enough and we keep losing more. Although the parking structure in this plan is nice, having a four-story apartment complex above it brings a parking load that will fill at least two-thirds of that structure. When you couple that with the three new high-density underparked apartments, there's no extra room in the structure, and we need more parking. Let's talk parking by numbers. Randall Land, the jewel. The community lost 24 spots once the property was fenced off, and additional 17-metered spots on Palm Avenue during construction. This loss in parking has already negatively affected some businesses. Once this project is complete and leased out, there will be at least 35 residents looking for parking. U.S. Bank Citymark. Currently, this lot holds 80 parking spaces. This lot is full all of the time, and the community has had access to this lot for decades. Once this project begins and we lose 80 parking spots, our village will feel the effects. There's not enough parking in the village to absorb those 80 spots, plus the overflow from the Randall Land project. And once this project is complete, at least 37 residents will be looking for a place to park. 8181 Allison. Currently, there are 20 to 30 cars parked along Allison Avenue and Date Avenue in front of the city hall every single day and night. This speaks to the future of high-density underparked developments that are coming our way. Special events and church. 20% of each calendar year has a special event on it. 55 days a year, a special event brings 100 to 130 vendors to our village. These vendors are directed to the Date Avenue parking lot, leaving closer parking for customers. And every Sunday, All Peoples Church directs their congregation to the Date Avenue lot in order to keep parking available for the other 45 businesses that are open on Sundays. Once the new city hall begins construction and we lose the Date Avenue lot, where will everybody park? Time gap. There is a large time gap from today until 2031, when the parking structure would be complete.
30 seconds.
During this gap, the businesses, residents, and customers will continually lose parking spaces. Without parking, we lose customers. Without customers, we lose businesses. And without businesses, we lose our vibrancy. What plans does the city and the city council have with regards to this impending parking crisis? If you haven't started working on this problem, what are you waiting for? This parking structure with a four-story resident apartment complex above it is not the answer.
Thank you for your comment. Your time is up.
Thank you.
David Harris.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and City Council Members. David Harris, resident of La Mesa for 20 years, vice chair of the Planning Commission, and I've worked along with colleagues on the library task force three years ago and presented the recommendations to the city council at that time. So it's really exciting to see this plan come forward. I fully support it. I think that the city staff input and the consultants' work together has come up with a very viable plan, and I look forward to seeing this plan into reality over the next six years. Thank you.
Thank you. This is the presentation, right? We're not taking action. All right. Thank you very much. Thank you very much. We're now moving on to public comment. First public speaker is Barbara Wheeler, followed by Cindy Mayna. Welcome.
Good evening, mayor, council. I want to open my publicly offer an apology to Vice Mayor Casares and Councilmember Dillard. I made a statement that was unkind, and I apologize for it. I am representing Bellflower Drive and the residents who live on this beautiful, small street, many of who are here tonight. We are dealing with one big problem on our street, a drug flop house run by Richard Evans. He needs to be stopped now. The residents have been dealing with him for over 10 years. We have police activity on our street all the time. They keep telling us their hands are tied. Well, council, untie the police department's hands and let them take him down. This is not the first time we have asked for help from the city council. Please listen to us and make some decisions that will take care of this problem for good. Richard Evans has been running an illegal drug rehab house forever, calling it different names to cover up the wrongdoings, names such as a sober living house, a halfway house, and now a drug rehab facility. This house is full of drug addicts, crackheads, who walk up and down our street as high as a kite. In the past, there have been, there has been a registered child molester when a woman with a young child was living there, a felon on drug charges, as well as many low-life creepy people. And now we have some idiot who thinks it's a good, it's good to place a youth group home next door to a drug house. Vulnerable youth should not be next door to a drug house. This needs to be stopped now. Several of my neighbors are looking into moving off our street, not because they want to leave, because they have young children and fear for their lives. I am saddened by knowing this is going to happen. I myself will not move. I myself will fight to save Bellflower Drive from the druggies and the youth home. I will continue to come to council meetings, and you will hear me speak on the matter until it is cleared up. Removing the drug house is priority. The youth home we can address at a later date. If it is a well-supervised housing and special needs children, as we have been told, it might be a good thing, but not next door to a drug house. Thank you.
Thank you. Cindy Mayna, followed by Martha Burdles. Welcome.
My name is Cindy Mayna, and I wanted to give you an update on what has happened at the Meritage Project on Jericho Road. On Sunday, September 7, police were dispatched to the property. As the property had not been secured once the church left, vandals had entered the property. The police noted broken windows, open doors, lights turned on, and graffiti on some windows. They investigated every room to which they had access. I emailed Luisa Fallado the next day. She's with Meritage, and she notified her manager, Ephraim Jolson, who responded to my concerns. He stated that the best way to secure a site is to demolish the existing buildings. He suggested that I contact Laura in the planning department in order to expedite the demolition plan approval, which has been prolonged, according to him. I did not get a favorable response to any suggestions of security measures. I let him know that I would not be contacting Laura to encourage that the plan approval process be expedited. I believe that the meticulous plan approval process is for the benefit of the community. That afternoon, I notified Lynette Santos of the vandalism. Lynette has been very supportive of the neighbors throughout this entire process. Later that evening, Mr. Jolson did email me and stated that a temporary fence would be constructed. Lynette Santos emailed me on the next day about this new security measure. The fence was installed on Friday, September 12. I don't know what happened behind the scenes, but it seems that Mr. Jolson did have a change of heart about adding some security measures. Unfortunately, it was noted yesterday that the fence was unlocked and wide open. It appears that workmen had left the fence unsecured. And I did notify Lynette Santos and Luisa at Meritage yesterday evening. The fence was still open after midnight. This afternoon, I drove by, and the fence was closed. That was a good turnaround. It was a quick turnaround. So in light of the recent vandalism at the property, we as neighbors are going to start a neighborhood watch group. Claudia Artega, who is a crime prevention specialist with the police department and a police officer, will be meeting with the neighbors on October 21. Claudia did tell me that the police had received calls back in August...
30 seconds.
I'm sorry?
30 seconds.
Oh. ...of suspicious activities at the property. We need you as our elected officials to advocate for us with any future issues that are sure to arise as this project goes forward. I don't believe we, as private citizens, have the clout to get done what needs to be done. We will be making reasonable requests of the developer that will ensure the health and safety of our community. Thank you.
Thank you. Martha Burdles, followed by James Mulligan.
Good evening. Good evening. Thank you for the opportunity to speak to you tonight. My name is Martha Burdles, and I represent a group of almost 30 people who want to have more off-leash space at McCarver Park. I've been a resident of La Mesa for 21 years, and when the Sun Valley Golf Course went out of business and the grounds were opened up for residences, green space, I was thrilled. I've had dogs most of my adult life, and it was nice to go there and just play with my dogs and let them run and sniff and explore. Then the leash signs went up and the enclosures went in. That was really a blow. There's a group of people who come to the park every day with their dogs, and they all run and play together. It just doesn't work in the enclosures. They are too confining. And in fact, the AKC recommends that a minimum size for a dog park should be one acre, and they don't even come close to that. One of my dogs, Churro, is an 84-pound Great Dane Belgian Malinois poodle mix and has enough energy to just run a small village. He needs to run distances, and as much as I'd like to take him up to the mountains to run and hunt every day, it's not practical. It takes up too much of my time, and it is too hot in the summer. Many other people feel the same way about their dogs. They need to give their dogs the space they need to run and explore. They don't have the time or the resources to head east to the mountains or drive all the way to the coast, to the dog beaches. If you could please just run a fence from the base of the two paths that run, that lead down to the grass, just south of the tree line, of the five-row tree that is a little bit south of the second enclosure, you don't have to move or change the enclosure, but just include it in the off-leash area we are proposing. As it is, we tend to allow our dogs to run off-leash anyway, but every now and then the Humane Society shows up and tickets one of us for $300. $300 a pop for a dog can get really expensive. It really stings, and our dogs really aren't bothering anybody because most of the people that go to McArthur Park are dog people. It is a good community of all of us that come with our dogs. We know all the dogs by name, and we even know some of the owners' names. It works that way for some reason. We talk to the dogs, and we know each other, and when the dogs are in a large space frolicking and playing, it's a high level of joy. Examples of similar dog parks that we are proposing are the Grape Street Dog Park and the Laurel Street Dog Park in the city of San Diego. Those are both very large, and of course, all the dog beaches up and down the coast are really good. Many of us have adopted our dogs because we're aware of the high number of dogs piling up in the dog shelters. It's a travesty that people, it's a travesty that people adopt or buy dogs to abandon them later. We are doing our part to rescue these dogs that desperately need homes. We need the space to give our dogs to have a great life, too. There are plenty of studies that show that dogs on leashes and in confined spaces exhibit much more hostile behavior, and I've seen that myself. To roam free is what they crave, and it makes them happy, healthy dogs, and it makes happy, healthy pet owners, too. So please end this onerous practice of finding us $300 a dog.
Thank you for your comment. Your time is up.
Open up the space. Thank you.
Thank you, James Mulligan, followed by Brenda Leek.
Thank you. Hi, mayor. Hi, city council. I'm here in support of expanding the dog park. I've been a resident of La Mesa for 14 years. I've had high-energy, large dogs that whole time, which basically requires me to drive down a dog beach so they can properly be exercised because all the dog parks in the jewel of the hills are far too small for high-energy dogs. And I think it'd be great if we could add to the agenda the request to expand this dog park area. And I believe that the city that builds itself as the jewel of the hills deserves a jewel of a dog park. That's all.
Thank you. Welcome.
Thank you. Thank you, city staff and council. I feel like I want to give you a little background. I feel like I want to give you a little background about myself because some of you may not know what I'm involved with. For the last decade, I've actually been a resident in the downtown village. I'm very passionate about the growth. I'm about to invest in another restaurant in the downtown village. And I own one of the most vibrant and prominent businesses in, of restaurants in the village. Unfortunately, I feel many people think she's crushing it. She's always busy. What a great location. But it's also nearly bankrupted me twice, and that's not included COVID or the riots that we had five years ago. I've had to pivot my business several times and fight my way in every step. And no one talks about that, and that's really not what I'm here to discuss. I'm here to discuss the fact that for five years, I've been asking about outside dining. And I have not had a phone call, an email, or a conversation about it. It is really disappointing and frustrating to me. I believe in you, and I know that you have many, many other projects going on. I know that there's a lot happening. However, when I attended the workshop last week, and it was the second workshop for the downtown village-specific plan, I felt this was just another check-in-the-box for you to get the grant money, the reimbursements, or whatever that is needed to help offset maybe some of the consultants that you've paid to be there to talk about. I mean, we were talking about the sub-area outline of the village for at least an hour with everybody in the community. There was no talk of the parking crisis. There was no mention in this downtown village-specific plan about the library or the expansion of the civic center. Why would that not be involved and included in that plan? We were left feeling like we were talking about parking in that area that we're not even going to have. I apologize. I'm a little upset and disappointed with my situation, with where I am, with you. I feel, I feel disappointed that there's been no, there's just been no outreach to me to date. And here I am trying to budget again for the year, where I stood here and talked about this last year. And I have thirty employees wondering where we're at, and it's a constant, constant pivot. Again, I know there's many other things that are going on, but we're having other restaurant that's opening. It's a brand-new restaurant. They have their outside dining. I support hacienda. I'm excited about it. But where are we and where am I going to be with a new restaurant when I can't get it for five years with curbside? I look forward to communication and working together in our partnership, and I don't want to have to get media involved, but I will.
Thank you for your comment.
Thank you. Conflict disclosures by anyone on council? All right, our next is board and commission appointments. We have eleven applications and eleven openings for the Youth Advisory Commission, so that worked out. I'll read the names to you. These will be my, my motion to appoint Haley West, Maya Sapp, Callan Rossiter, Grace Regan, Nate Madrid, Aliyah Lee, Sochiel Willow Gomez, Miriam Garcia, Loretta Carrata, Alexandra Rapistaffas, Lacey Anne Campania. And that's my motion.
Second.
Thank you.
Sorry, it's floating very. Motion carries with all council members voting yes.
Thank you. Okay. We don't have any other speaker cards for consent calendar? Okay. So consent calendar, ten to ten-one, to ten point eleven?
I'd like to pull ten point eleven just for a question and comment, not for a separate vote.
Right. Go ahead.
Yes. Okay, so I think this is our first Neighborhood Traffic Management Program quarterly report, and I was hoping that either Mr. Throne or Mr. Kennard could come up and just kind of tell the public what happened. I, I attended two street meetings with you, and they were about an hour and a half, and there must have been thirty, forty people. And I was really impressed. And people ask the craziest things, and you answer everything professionally and calmly. One neighborhood wants eighteen speed bumps, and you just rolled with it. So I just want to hear the highlights of your quarterly report.
Sure. Currently, we have two neighborhoods that we're currently meeting in what we call Phase Two Traffic Calming. Those are neighborhood engagements. We're really trying to resolve a lot of issues out there as it relates to traffic. Those two neighborhoods are on Lois and Dugan. And we met with actually Lois last week at a second meeting. So our first meetings, we usually go there to basically engage with the neighborhood, find out what their issues are, and then we come back with concepts and ideas. So we finally came back to Lois. Last Wednesday, it was raining, but we came back, and the neighborhood showed up, and they came to kind of a conclusion of what they want. They ended up wanting four humps, just so you know. And then we actually meet with Dugan tomorrow night. And otherwise, everything's going very well. We're currently completing quite a bit of our Phase One Traffic Calming. Probably about seventy-five percent are now completed. And in Phase Three, we have broken it up into a little bit of pieces. We've done all the things we could do with city's internal staff, and then we're going to put the rest of the project out to bid for construction.
And then any updates on the temporary speed hump program?
What I can say is we've ordered some temporary speed humps to, I don't have a timeline yet on that, but they've been ordered. So we hope to be able to use those as examples because a lot of residents said, well, I'd like to drive over one.
I'd love to test the, do a test.
So we're going to put a couple of those here around the civic center so that the neighborhoods and the residents can go and test them and see what they think, get feedback.
Okay, thank you.
Mm-hmm.
I'll make a motion to approve consent.
I had one just comment. Apologies. I just wanted to highlight ten-eight. I, I let our city manager know that I had a comment beforehand. It is the grant with the alcoholic beverage control, the ABC. I'm really excited about it. La Mesa Police Department applied for it, and we will be getting about sixty thousand dollars. I'm just going to read directly from the staff report very briefly. This grant is designed to use local police resources within their primary jurisdictions on an overtime basis to implement ABC's minor decoy, shoulder tap programs, and conduct informed merchants preventing alcohol-related crime tendencies or impact inspections. As someone who was hit by a drunk driver in La Mesa last year, it's, it makes me really, really happy to see that. I know our police department and our city has been taking this seriously, but that ABC also saw the need for us to have this at our city and being able to use our own local police on overtime rather than having to bring anyone else in, I think, is really important. So while the chief just re-entered, I am just shouting out the, the program with the ABC and that grant. I'm really excited about it. So thank you to yourself and all of your officers for working on that.
Motion carries with all council members voting yes.
Item eleven is a second reading of an ordinance.
An ordinance of the City Council of the City of La Mesa, California, amending Title Twenty-Four of the La Mesa Municipal Code to add Chapter Twenty-Four, Point Oh Five Four, entitled Objective Design Standards Regarding Housing Development Pursued to the Housing Accountability Act.
I'll make a motion to adopt.
Motion carries with all council members voting yes.
Item eleven-two is a council-scheduled ordinance.
An ordinance of the City Council of the City of La Mesa, California, amending Section Two Point Oh Eight, Point Oh One O of the La Mesa Municipal Code to establish the first regular city council meeting in August and second meeting in November as a summer and holiday recess, respectively.
I'll make a motion to adopt.
And I'll second that.
Motion carries with all council members voting yes.
Twelve-one, consideration of possible approval, La Mesa Community Parking Commission Recommendation for La Mesa Village Enhancement Fund Program and Adoption of Resolutions, Appropriating Funds, and Modifying Program Guidelines. Good evening, Mr. Dedman.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. In two thousand nineteen, the City Council approved the Village Enhancement Fund Program. The purpose of the VEF program is to encourage ongoing investment in the downtown village, attract customers to businesses, and to create entertainment opportunities for residents and families. Just some, over some key elements of the program. Eligible participants, nonprofits, organizations, and private businesses can apply for funding for special events, promotions, programs, and advertising. Those activities must take place in Parking District One. Those applications must demonstrate an area-wide benefit to the businesses in Parking District One. The program functions on a reimbursement basis, up to the approved funding by City Council. The application timeline each year is from July to September. July thirty, from July first to July thirty-first, the application window is open. In August, the Parking Commission hears, agendizes the item and makes, formulates a recommendation to City Council. And then in September, either the first meeting or the second meeting, that recommendation goes to council for possible approval. The VEF program is funded using fifty percent of annual net parking revenues from the prior fiscal year. This year, we have sixty-three thousand, three hundred and sixty-eight dollars and fifty cents available for the twenty-five, twenty-six program year. The parking fund's current balance is five hundred and seventeen thousand, four hundred and thirty-five dollars. This is including the sixty-three, three sixty-eight, fifty being recommended tonight. The program this year received five applications. The Parking Commission heard those applications at the August nineteenth meeting and is recommending an even distribution of the funding to all five applications. So with that, the Parking Commission, or the staff is recommending City Council consider and possibly approve the Parking Commission's recommendation for VEF program funding and approve a resolution allocating the sixty-three thousand, three hundred and sixty-nine dollars from the Downtown Parking Fund to the twenty-six, twenty-five, twenty-six downtown VEF budget. The Parking Commission is also making a recommendation, a second recommendation tonight. Since inception, the Village Enhancement Fund Program has funded three events that existed prior to the program's inception. It's funded two new events and one new program. The table before you shows the years each event was funded and the amount of funding each has received. The total amount of funding since program inception is roughly five hundred and one thousand dollars. And this, this number does not include the sixty-three, three sixty-eight, fifty potentially being allocated tonight. So during the current application cycle, no new events applied for funding. While the program has successfully helped initiate new events, the Parking Commission's position is that the program has largely become a funding mechanism for ongoing events. To balance the desire to support community events with infrastructure needs in the village, the Parking Commission is recommending as follows. An annual cap of fifty thousand dollars for the program. Modified eligibility criteria to only allow for new special events to apply. They are also asking for some added discretion to be able to provide a zero-funding recommendation in a given funding cycle. Currently, the Parking Commission does not recommend zero-funding under the provisions of the current program guidelines. And lastly, asking the city, the council to authorize the city manager to approve these changes to the program guidelines. So with that, staff recommends council consider and possibly approve a resolution approving the Parking Commission's recommendation to modify the Village Enhancement Fund Program. That concludes staff's presentation. Staff, available for any questions you may have.
Councilmember Suzuki and Councilmember Lothian?
Mr. Dedman, I have a question.
Sure.
So you, you mentioned that currently, the, the way the program operates, it doesn't allow for a zero, zero funding. So what does that mean? So no matter what, if you apply, you automatically get funding?
No. What it means is that the Parking Commission has been operating under the protocol that if, let's say, there's fifty thousand dollars available, they're going to recommend fifty thousand full dollars to fulfill council's direction to the Parking Commission, assuming they qualify for, for funding. What the Parking Commission is asking for is the ability to provide a, a zero-funding recommendation. It would still go to council, but that zero-funding recommendation would be voted on by them. And it could be for things like if they didn't feel like the program was new or the event was new, if it was a rebranded event, they would have that ability to, to recommend a, a zero-funding to council. So that's basically what they're asking.
Councilmember Lothian?
Hi, hi, Lynn. I, I like these changes. I, I think it's kind of crazy that you have something as profitable as Oktoberfest getting parking meter money, so it doesn't make sense to me. Twenty years ago, I was on the Parking Commission, and I remember back then, I asked for parking meter money for cleaning the La Mesa and, and litter removal and watering the plants. And I was told, no, capital improvements only. So I like the idea of the meter money going back to mostly capital improvements. So I think we're definitely going in the right direction.
Council?
Thank you. How much, how much money have we spent on this in the past?
Total since program inception? About five hundred and one thousand dollars.
Yeah.
And that's over, the, the program's been around six years. We did lose one year to COVID. We lost fiscal year twenty-twenty-one when the, when the program was canceled or temporarily canceled. So it's, it's five years of program funding, five, about five hundred and one thousand dollars.
Yeah. I, I feel like the sixty-three thousand, being able to split that evenly is probably the best that we could, we could do. And, you know, I approve of going forward with this. I think that you've maximized the entire plan, so I will be supporting this. Thank you, Mayor.
Any other comments or questions? I'll entertain if someone wants to make a motion.
We need two separate, two separate ones.
There's no need for that. A sample motion, if you're so inclined, is just to approve staff recommendation.
Motion carries with all council members voting yes.
Thank you.
Item thirteen is council-initiated. I will hand this over to Vice Mayor Casars.
Thank you. So many of you in the audience have, have heard residents from Bellflower Drive, including Barbie Wheeler, who spoke earlier this evening, talk about a sober living facility on the street and, on their street. And that was something that she brought forward at the very first meeting that myself and Councilmember Suzuki were sworn in at. And it was immediately something that I felt, and I know I'm definitely not the only person on the council that felt, was something urgent that we needed to address. And as, as we've shared with residents, and unfortunately, our hands are pretty tied by state fair housing law. That being said, I have spent a lot of time looking over potential ordinances, including Fountain Valleys in, in California, and trying to find creative ways for us to attempt to solve this problem. I don't want to overpromise, and that's a big reason that establishing an ad hoc subcommittee is the action tonight rather than bringing forward an ordinance that may not be legally sound, that, that may fail or that may, you know, unjustly overregulate facilities that may be following the laws and coexisting. I, I do believe that there are ways that group homes and sober living facilities can, can coexist in our residential neighborhoods. There are examples of them that no one knows about because they don't cause problems. But this is not one of those. And I, I hope we can find a solution for Bellflower Drive. I think we can. And I, I've been discussing for months with Councilwoman Lothian about ways that we can, we can figure this out. And so, you know, I just want to state one more time. My goal is, is not to over-restrict licensed, properly-run, safe facilities that are peacefully coexisting. They shouldn't really feel the effects of a future ordinance. The goal is for us to put a stop to owners who are in it because frankly, it does happen, not just here, where owners take advantage of folks who are trying to. not just here, where owners take advantage of folks who are trying to get back on their feet and stay on the wagon. And I think that's something that's really important, and we see facilities, not just here, that are being run properly and that are providing huge resources to the community. And, and so that's, that's why I am making this recommendation. So I am going to make a motion to not only approve this item, but also to appoint Councilwoman Lothian, since we have already been working on this together, to the subcommittee. Oh, I apologize. We have speakers first. That's my bad.
Speakers first, or can we talk first?
We can talk, but we can't motion. That was my bad.
No, I know that, but just comments up here first, or comments out there first?
Why don't we let the speakers talk?
Okay.
Barbie Wheeler, followed by Carly Robinson.
Thank you again so much. I'm addressing Agenda, I thought it was 13-1, but 14-1, presented by Vice Mayor Casares, relating to forming a subcommittee to review existing regulations governing group homes and facilities. We, the residents on Bellflower Drive, want to see the city work with this committee to make regulations very strict to close down Richard Evans Drug House. We have met our limit on having fights in the street, people swinging knives around, and drug overdoses on our small, quiet street that we cannot enjoy because of the dangerous people living in the drug house. With this subcommittee, you, the council, can make strict rules on these facilities, not only on Bellflower Drive, but on other places in La Mesa as well. Please make this a priority in your planning meetings, and think about all the people you'll be helping. This is a good plan, and I thank Vice Mayor Casares for putting this together. And I hope that all council members join her in making this happen. We need this for all of La Mesa. Not, and don't remember, it's not a Band-Aid to put on Bellflower Drive. Rip that Band-Aid off and get to work on this immediately. Don't put it on the back burner. Make it priority, and thank you.
Carly Robinson, followed by Emily Snyder. Welcome.
Thank you. First, I really want to thank councilmembers Lothian and Casares for all of your work. A little background on this, I've lived in this neighborhood for almost 45 years now. I grew up playing on Bellflower Drive. It was such a great cul-de-sac as a kid. We would always, you know, just have tons of street time because it was a really safe place, considering there's only three houses, including mine, at the end of the street. But about 10 years ago, when my son, who is now in fifth grade at Lemon Avenue, was just born, we were constantly dealing with calls to the police for a variety of different really unsafe things that were happening on our street. Recent, not even, probably a couple of years ago, we were coming home from a Little League game and had both of our boys on the back of our golf cart and witnessed a man standing right in the front of our driveway whipping around probably a 10-to-15-foot chain. The same man was the person who was appointed as the house psychologist. Probably not qualified for that position. That's just a small example. This man ended up serving some time for that, which is a relief. However, the owner of the home, who's truly only in this for profit, he welcomed this same person back into his home upon release. And the person he was trying to hit was actually the owner's son. So if this gives you any idea about the character of, of this man, let that sink in. And then I'd also, I'd also like to mention just the absolute chaos that he fosters by bringing into this home. So last year, my son's bike was sitting at the front of our driveway, and this man repeatedly, we had him on our cameras repeatedly coming to our door, asking to see the little boy who was driving, riding the bike. This man was probably five years younger than I am. We called the police. The police contacted the owner, and then he happily removed him from the house, only to welcome in somebody else who, later that week, was having some sort of episode in our street with a knife and required a tactical response from La Mesa PD. So, yeah, it's just not, it's not safe. So I just really, really thank you for taking this seriously, and hope that we're able to work together to create some sort of reasonable solution for us. Thank you.
Thank you. Emily Snyder, followed by Billy Belts. Welcome.
Thank you. Good evening. My name is Emily, and I was born and raised here in La Mesa. A few years ago, my husband and I purchased a home on Bellflower Drive because of what this neighborhood has always represented, which is peace, safety, and community. We were excited to move into a quiet cul-de-sac, start our family, and surrounded by long-term residents and families who deeply care about this city. But what we didn't know was that there was an unlicensed, unregulated group rental home operating just a few doors down, which has really become an unlawful public nuisance to the entire street and surrounding neighborhood. Earlier this year, I welcomed my daughter into the world. I want nothing more than to provide her with a safe home and an opportunity to ride her bike and play outside without being on edge. Instead, we are faced daily with a constant stream of cars speeding up and down the street at all hours of the day and night, coming and going from this particular residence. We've had our cars broken into and our possessions stolen. We've had strangers walking slowly past our house, some visibly under the influence, staring into our windows. We've made multiple complaints to the non-emergency line. Police activity at this residence has become a regular occurrence and is so incredibly unsettling to our family and makes me concerned as a new mother. There is an LLC registered to this address as Green Home Builders LLC, with a business description of business building consulting. I'm not sure that that aligns with what's occurring at this residence, and it may be a misrepresentation. In addition to the question of legality of the business operations, we must also consider the California laws and local ordinances that are in place to protect our peace, quality of life, enjoyment of property, and address nuisance behavior. The volume of disturbances and complaints show that this residence is clearly a public nuisance, as defined by the Civil, California Civil Code Sections 3479 and 3480. Rather than performing his responsibilities as a landlord to prevent and address these violations, the landlord is doing the opposite and perpetuating the situation with no consequences or accountability. And now, to make matters worse, a youth group home is being proposed right next door to this residence. Placing vulnerable children next to a house that has repeatedly attracted police activity and house sex offenders is not just misguided, it's irresponsible and dangerous. We know that you're aware of the criminal activity and concerns of our neighbors, and the amount of city time and resources dealing with the incidents associated with this property. At what point is a crime going to be concerning enough to shut this facility down? At this point, the city is knowingly accepting the risk of this property and accepting the consequences of neglecting the civic duties to keep our community safe. I'm not here to villainize individuals who are working towards recovery. Those services are important, and I do support fair housing. But they must be regulated, transparent, and placed in appropriate locations, not hidden in quiet cul-de-sacs where families and children live. We're asking you to do the right thing and address the irresponsible and unethical landlord at the end of Bellflower Drive. Please investigate this facility, enforce the laws, and protect the rights of residents in La Mesa, who deserve the safe neighborhoods we have worked so hard to build. Thank you.
Thank you. Billy Belts, followed by Ilka Weston.
Thank you. Thank you for having me. A lot of my notes have already been covered so far with some great points made by Vice Mayor Casares and my neighbors. So I won't say that again, but I do want to emphasize that when we say that this is an unsafe house, we don't mean that in a way that there are seedy people that scare us, right? We mean that in a way that it's literally unsafe. It's unsafe for our kids to be playing out in a cul-de-sac in front of their home. And this house really is a ticking time bomb. Something is going to happen, and I know that Barbie said some neighbors are thinking of moving, which is true. My wife and I cannot afford to move. We, we put everything that we have into this home. We have a son that we love with everything that we have, and we, so we don't know what to do other than come to you, ask for help, and not just support, vocal support, but action, quick action. Because like you've heard from all of us, something is going to happen, and we, we don't want that to be the case. We want it to be solved in a way that is, yeah, we, we need you guys' help. You were elected to take action, and this is where we're depending on you. Thank you.
Thank you. Ilka Weston. Welcome.
Thank you so much. My name is Ilka Weston. I am the proud co-founder of TAP, that is Transparency and Accountability for Those Under Probation, which includes youth. We have a horrific, I mean, you could call it a pandemic, but drugs and alcohol plague everyone, and it's heartbreaking. I remember when I was, I was born and raised here in La Mesa. The sausage chain was great. My mom got her favorites. It was wonderful. And I remember walking in South Park, and I saw this big, huge mansion in the middle of the block. And there I stopped and say, hey, a couple of my buddies bought a mansion in Sherman Heights. Is this so you can walk home from the bar? You know, I didn't know, but that was Pathfinders, a really respectful facility that has sober living options. Now, there are no regulations on sober living, but there are things that can be done. I talked to Jeannie McAllister today, and she was very sad that she couldn't write a statement in support of our wonderful Vice Mayor Casares. Thank you so much for always caring about the people. It is vital that we hold them accountable, because what we see right now is what we saw in the College District. And we see a lot of people do that with rehabs. They buy a home, they smash six people in a room, and then they charge them $1,000 each. And that is ridiculous. There is no complicity or, or regulations. And I applaud the City Council of La Mesa for taking it on. And I volunteer my time happily, because the one thing I want is for people to have second chances. Two people that I'm representing as an advocate, a trans woman who they didn't check on, lay there dead in a room for three days in a rehabilitation home. Another person was ready to go, and he didn't even commit a crime. He was just present where one was, and is now dead as well. These are people who took these things seriously. We should never call it a drug house, but obviously, the complicity of the homeowner is taking advantage of it. And right there, it was clearly stated, he has it listed as a building services. Right there, he broke the law. There is complicit direction of these regulations, and I'll happily send it to those that I know on the board. And it's nice to see you, councilmember. I knew one of your employees. Yeah, you advertised with me when I was with La Mesa. I just want you all to know that you can count on me. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Lothian.
Yes, thank you, Vice Mayor, for bringing this up. I have been so perplexed as to why this house has been so awful, and there seems like there has been no strategy to take care of it. I just don't understand. I've been selling real estate for 23 years, and there's been other homes in La Mesa that I've seen the same problem. The neighbors just cry about it, and I just don't understand why something can't happen. I'd love to get your notes, because you were talking about absolute ordinances that could absolutely help us. But what I did is I've been studying this house. First of all, the name of it is Hand-It-Home Detox House. You go on the website, and it seems like a, it seems legitimate, it seems professional, it seems caring. If I had a problem with drugs and alcohol or knew someone, I would go, wow, what a great place to go, because it really is presented nicely. However, I asked Chief Sweeney to provide me with a police summary report, and he did it today, and there's 380 entries. Now, 311ers are proactive, self-initiated. They know that that house is such a problem that the LMPD is cruising it constantly. However, on that same summary report, there was calls for trespassing, fighting, partying, cars almost hitting people, theft, disturbing the peace, domestic violence, drug overdose, preserving the peace. And I'm just saying to myself, how awful for this little neighborhood to have that kind of criminal activity coming out of that house. And I, I hope my frustration is over, that we haven't been able to do something, and we actually do do something, because I just believe that when you become that much of a nuisance house, there should be no more looking the other way. We, we just cannot. And let me see, oh, yeah. Another thing, too, is on his website, he is, it's advertised as a licensed facility. I called Sacramento different numbers. You know, I spent an hour calling different places. I went online. There is no license. There just isn't. Then, I also online researched, and apparently, you're supposed to, when you do a sober living house, and this has medical, they talk about detox, medical facilities, medical personnel, that they're supposed to have some sort of zoning, was a stipulation of it. I did check with city management today, and they said, actually, it wasn't, but that may be something we could do. So anyway, I'm looking forward to it. We're not going to drag our feet. We're going to, we're going to work quickly.
I'll hand this back over to the Vice Mayor to make a motion.
Thank you. I apologize that I tried to cut you all off before. Sometimes you get caught up up here, but I would like to make a motion to approve this item that I brought forward with the recommendation of Councilwoman Lothian, being the other council member, along with myself, on the subcommittee, since we have been talking about this and working on this together.
One second. Okay.
Motion carries with all council members voting yes.
Thank you. Item 14 of council committee reports. I'll start with Councilmember Dillard. Okay. Oh, Councilmember Lothian. Councilmember Suzuki.
Just that the San Diego Community Power Board will be meeting this Thursday at the Port of San Diego at 5:00. It's also going to be available online.
Okay. Vice Mayor Casares? Okay, anyone traveling? All right. City Attorney remarks? Were adjourned, oh, I'm just going to make one clarification. The flag at half-mast was for September 11th, just so you'll know. Were adjourned until October 14th.